CFO is out.
The first item on our workshop tonight was for to kind of discuss how the council wanted to go about allocating the $30,000 that was included in our budget. So, in addition to having it up here, I'm gonna hand it up for you. So, let me just kind of recap where we're at and then, and I've written some notes to try to facilitate the conversation, but it's ultimately y'all's decision how you want. Just note that the FY 23 budget, 23-24 budget allocated $30,000 to 501(c)(3) organizations and to 501(c)(4) organizations. Institutions that we have served in past years or supported in past years is the Smith County Heritage Museum, County Humane Society, Senior Citizens Center, which is funded partially by Smith County, the Habitat for Humanity, Smith County Emergency Management, which is partially funded by Smith County, Smith County Library, which is funded partially by Smith County, Smith County Health Center, which is a 501(c)(3). For those that don't know, those are Internal Revenue Code designations for nonprofit organizations. The Youth and Family Resource Network is a 501(c)(3), Emanuel House is a 501(c)(3), the Smith County Drug Coalition is a 501(c)(3), and the last two years, the Boy Scouts haven't been supported by council action because the money didn't go locally and went to the Middle Tennessee District. They couldn't tell us exactly how it was allocated to cardinals and citizens, so that was council action. Okay, civic organizations, and my recommendation is for you to think about these different things that are just 501(c)(3) because these are designed to do a service to the public. The Smith County Chamber of Commerce, you know, their purpose being to increase business in the town, we have supported them. And then the Upper Comla Human Resource Agency, we have supported them with dues and a contribution, and they tell us it's allocated to carthagues in the town of Carthage and how it's allocated to citizens from the town of Carthage. I just want you to understand the materiality of the 30,000 in the total budget. It's what, five one thousandths of the total general fund expenditures, okay? So, historically, we have spent a great amount of time discussing point zero zero five percent of the total budget, but that, I'll be here till the cows come home, however y'all decide to do it. There. Okay, so the questions to consider, and once again, anybody can jump in on this, this is just my catalyst to try to have a conversation. Should the 501(c)(4) organizations be budgeted separately from the 501(c)(3) organizations? Chamber's goals to promote business and tourism in Smith County, including Carthage. At one of the meetings, I think Councilman Peters said that, you know, we weren't a member, that is a technically true statement, but we are founding organizer of the Chamber of Commerce, and the mayor holds an automatic position on the, on the chamber. We don't pay a membership fee, but we have historically supported an amount of $9,300 annually with the concept being of promoting business and tourism, and that's what they do, okay?
Is the $9,300, is that part of the 30,000 that we're talking about tonight?
It is part of the 30,000. But always remember, if you make changes, you can change the budget, it just takes two readings for us.
Was the change separated, would that take a budget amendment?
No.
To do that?
No, I don't think so, but I'm out of a drink, and I want Andre to weigh in, and sometimes maybe guys a little proactive as opposed to having to deal with things. That's, sorry.
It's alright.
Okay, the town is a member of UCHRA, and we pay a membership fee, but we also have been providing a donation for designation to citizens of the town of Carthage. I do know one of the programs that is being federally funded that UCHRA does is utility assistance for water, and the UCHR decides their qualifications, we just direct them there, and they can get up to $250 assistance on their water bills. Okay. Item B is, should we publish an invitation for other nonprofits or civic agencies to apply for consideration? I'm just asking the question that the council needs to decide if they're going to allocate that 30,000, if you want to open that up to other organizations. We have received at least one organization that has applied for 23-24 assistance, but if nonprofit organizations out there know that you're going to decide how to allocate that $30,000, they may want to apply, and so that's a question that I think the council needs to decide. Also, the next question is, how does the council desire to determine which applicants will be funded each year? Just some thoughts, there may be an infinite number of ways to approach it. Applicants submit an application by July 1st, a delinquent or incomplete applications wouldn't be considered. Applications will contain our existing application form with requested supporting documentation, which I can show you that, we implemented that a year, year and a half ago. Applications that do not have the required supporting documentation will not be considered. You might say, the supporting documentation is not something I or you or decide, Tennessee Code annotated says this is what you shall have, but the biggest thing is, what is your purpose? How do you benefit the citizens of Carthage because these come from taxpayer dollars? Okay? If an applicant has questions about the application, they should reach out to the town prior to the application deadline. We have been somewhat proactive trying to rattle the chain for organizations to give us the documents so we can go ahead and give them their, their allocation. In my thoughts, you know, they, they should take the lead on that, we shouldn't have to generate that movement. If they want it, then they should do everything that's required for it, but we'll do whatever it comes to size. And I asked that question, should we be proactive in informing the applicant that their application is incomplete? Do we void the application per paragraph A? I or my staff, we don't want to be in a position of making that decision, and we just need clear guidance, how you want to do that. The council could convene a special call meeting to interview applicants, we could advertise and say, we're gonna take applications, here's the application, and you interview them, you could do that. Selected applicants will share equally in the 30,000 budget unless you dictate otherwise. Questions that you need to consider is, how many awardees will the council desire? Okay, you have $30,000, you have 30,000 applicants, which is an unreasonable thing, but you'd be giving them a dollar at least, okay? So, you gotta think about that. And then how you gonna differentiate which ones who apply that you want to give. How will the council defend their choices in case of a disgruntled applicant? I know this is not likely to happen with the town of Carthage, that there would be anybody to be disgruntled, however, I have heard of other places in the United States where people can be disgruntled, okay? So, we want to think in terms of that. Disbursements will be made simultaneously for those selected. I mean, we'll decide quarterly if we're gonna do these, and we'll just disperse it based on however it's allocated to the council for access. So, those are just thoughts, they're just some thoughts, there may be a plethora of ideas that need to be thrown out, but we got $30,000 that's allocated, we just need to know how you want to go about doing it. Obviously, you're not going to select those individuals or organizations tonight, well, I don't know, you might, but in any case, just be aware of the things that I mentioned too.
Do we have a listing of the amounts that we give each of these organizations that we currently funded in the last budget year?
Yes, it would be in your council reports, financial report for the month of June that you should have, and it'll have all the organizations there. I can read them off.
Yeah, I think we have, I have it handy.
Let's see, let's get back to page one.
I can tell you what page it'll be on, give me just a second.
And one thing to remember, last year y'all awarded $34,000.
Yeah, it'll be on the period ending June 30th, page number six. And we did disperse all of one of the applicants, the Backpack Program, we were proactive and tried to get the information at least twice, and we didn't get any response, so we did not disperse that for the prior fiscal year. So, you have the Chamber of Commerce, where we've gone through, you got the list, and there's how much they are in the annual budget amount. Have you got that?
Yeah.
If you don't, actually, I don't think they emailed it, I think we handed them out. It should be on email.
I don't think we scanned those in, did we? I think you handed them out.
Financial report.
Were they?
Well, mostly financial report.
Did you send it email?
Did I send it? No, I gave it to you.
Did I send it?
I know we reviewed those.
Yeah, I don't know if it was on paper or, you know.
There were, there were all different amounts, so some were 500, some were 500, some were 2500.
Yeah, I remember specifically Councilman Peters actually brought.
I'll go down through it right quick. Chamber of Commerce was 9,300, remember their 501(c)(4), Heritage Museum was 2,000, Humane Society 1,500, Senior Citizens 1,500, Library $6,000, Humanity, Habitat for Humanity was 1,000, Smith County EMA was 2,000, Health Center 2,000, Upper Comla Human Resource Agency 1,500, Youth and Family Resource Network was 1,960, which, that was a rounding thing for many years. Emanuel House was 500, which was the one that I think some identified, said, well, why is that just 500? That's what was approved. Backpack Program 2,500, and Smith County Drug Coalition was 2,500. Prior year, we had allocated $34,260, and this year, we have $30,000.
First, I thought you said the Backpack Program did not qualify, but then, then you just say they got $500?
No, they didn't, they never picked up their.
They never submitted the documents.
Submitted documents to get the check.
Okay, so basically, it was none, okay.
Actually, they didn't expend 34, they only expended 31,760.
Did the same ones that we funded last year, did they all submit paperwork this year?
None of them have submitted the paperwork for FY 23-24 because we didn't know what to.
I noticed that the UCHRA Drug Company and Resource, it's, you said 1,500, of course, everybody wants to pull, however, they draw down a ton of federal grants, correct? I'll write on that.
Yes, they should. Well, what a ton, that all.
Well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say a ton, they, they.
They do get federal funding.
It's, it's pretty heavy.
It is, it is.
Yeah. This is the Tennessee Comptrollers Audit Manual they use to, whenever they do an audit of municipality. These are the things that are dictated, what we're supposed to have. We can appropriate only for those nonprofits, but the fifth general welfare of the residents of the municipality shall be limited to the amounts appropriated for such purposes, and these are the items that are required. They have to give us a copy of their most completed annual audit or annual report with all their receipts and expenditures. The reality of it is, if we applied that one to the full letter of it, very few of these organizations would be able to get an audit except for those supported by the county. So, we require them to give us a financial statement showing us what their income is and what their expenses are. And we have a description of the program that serves the residents of the municipality and proposed use of nonprofits, civic organizations, this is just an additional thing, we've gone over this and we've applied with this. If we allocate $50 to the Chamber of Commerce, for example, we have to publish in the newspaper that we have given $50 to, that's the Chamber of Commerce.
So, help me remember, when we were gonna do the second reading for budget, when was that, last month or the month before last?
May.
So, if we had passed, if, if we were not having this session, and we had passed everything as is, what, what was gonna happen with the $34,000 that we get approved in the first reading?
If, if we hadn't, if there hadn't been any question about it, if it'd been just the 34, we had the individual organizations listed at the historical amount of contributions, and that's why we would have dispersed them if they'd given us the appropriate documentation. And that's the way it's been done for some time.
I think the gist of this is, what he's saying is, we've allotted $30,000, now you have to come up with a plan how you want to give it out. That's y'all's plan to come up with. Do you want to say whatever, whatever? But he needs to know, because he can't just arbitrarily just pick up and say, well, we'll do this 1,000, this one, you guys have to decide which one, which and how much you want to give.
If you look up here, this is the application, it doesn't have all the Excel lines on it when we print it, but every year, okay, every year, we're required for them to give us it again. Someone will say, well, I gave it to you last year. Say, well, yes, you did, we need it again after this new fiscal year. So, they have to identify what type of organization they are, and they have to give us, and they gotta certify, that they, they gotta give us the IRS letter, which designates whether they're, what kind of organization they are under the Internal Revenue Code. Some of, well, anybody that we've dispersed to has come up with it, or we've gotten it through the county indirectly. And then whether they are, if they're 501(c)(3), then they have to initial these certifications. We certify that all funds dispersed in the town of Carthage are or will be used exclusively to protect the general welfare of the residents of the town of Carthage. For example, I know the Humane Society, they have to keep records of every cat and dog where it was, where it was in seed room and some of that, and they send that in, and I look at it, I give a determination whether it's sufficient, which I'm more than willing to delegate to anybody that wants to send that one if you want. We've attached, and then they certify that they've attached the required documents, copy of the most recent completed annual audit or annual report detailing all their receipts and expenditures, and I require them, somebody's got to sign it, they've got to take responsibility for it. Somebody sends just a bank statement, that's not sufficient, that doesn't tell me, it tells me something, but not what we need to know. A description of how the program serves the residents of Carthage, a statement of proposed use of fiscal assistance, and then they certify that we understand our report shall be open to public inspection during regular business hours in the clerk's office. If they're a 501(c)(4), then they have to certify, once again, how it's general welfare and audited financial statements. These generally allow audited financial statements, like the library and, and Emergency Management, you know, they're, they are in the county's annual comptrollers audit, so no problem with that one. But like the Chamber of Commerce, they've had to find, give us financial statements, and UCHRA, they haven't given us those. And then it's a little bit different, tells us how your program promotes civic betterments and social improvements in the town of Carthage, promoting industry, trade, commerce, tourism, and recreation. How it promotes civic betterment, social improvements, to maintain and increase employment opportunities. Statement of proposed use of fiscal assistance, and a statement that they're open for regular business documents to be expected. So, hopefully, you can see by the application how the civic organization differs a little bit from a nonprofit. So, any nonprofit in the town of Carthage could apply.
Is that open to any nonprofit?
They're 501(c)(3) or a file of a pack, 501(c)(3).
But it's not like the Humane Society, they're not basically the town of Carthage, but we don't, so they do have to be here, or can we open it up to?
Oh, they, they can serve other people for the amounts that we give them.
Make sure we're not eliminating someone that would be beneficial to us.
If they, they just have to tell us if we gave them $5, you gotta tell us how you use that for the town of Carthage residents. And that's why, Humane Society's gotta keep records of, this cap was picked up on Main Street.
Right.
This is how much we expended for it. And I just use that one as an example, just know if you have an independent religious organization that can apply. So, just be cognizant of those things, but I don't know how you go about it other than make it available to the public. Say, if you got all your applications in by this date, you'll be considered, the council will pick which one you want to do, but that's just my thoughts, so you all can decide how you want to go. And Andre, we want you to take a proactive approach to any legislation or anything we do. If you see something on the front end that we haven't adequately covered, please just say, hey, you guys need to do something else.
This is all fine to me.
Is it appropriate to discuss how we allocate it in the workshop, how we allocate these?
Well, we don't vote, and you can discuss the process, say, we want to, say, limit to X amount of dollars per, everyone gets the same amount of money, no matter who they are. Divide it out equally, most of 30,000 dollars, if you get 10, they get divided, if you get five, they get divided out, you can do it that way. But you just have to come up with a line that y'all want to do and implement, that's, that's where it's happening, that's where we're at right now. It's all y'all to come up with something together to, how you want it to work.
The purpose of a workshop is to have a discussion, but you have to deliberate and vote in the meeting, you can't pre-decide and then just vote in the meeting summarily.
So, if I understand correctly, we have shaved $4,000 off what we gave away?
We already did.
We already have?
When, when you voted to the budget, you approved it with a $30,000 cap.
Is it?
Well, I know, but have we decided who gets the $4,000 cuts? So, it's gotta be shaved off of each one somewhere.
Right, we haven't decided who gets anything, because we haven't even put out the word yet, because we don't know how to disperse the money, because you guys haven't come up with a, a plan you want us to use.
Is one of the plans possible, could you take the $30,000 and do a pro-rated share of what everybody was getting, that $34,000? Is that possible?
You could take the $30,000, divide it by 14, and use the existing organizations.
That's a pretty good idea.
Okay, then what do you do with the new one that applies?
We're out of money.
They applied before any of these have.
Oh, we've already got some applications.
So, some people have already applied based on what we're doing here tonight?
Well, if you broke it down evenly between all four, it was $2,142, that's all 501(c)(3)'s and 501(c)(4).
Well, that's if you do it evenly, if you just did it pro-rated based on how it was before, that would be a different number, right?
It would be a different.
Now, do we know, who is, who has applied that did not receive one last year?
I can't remember the name of the organizations, but it's Lady Mills right here, but all that distributes food, family harvest.
The Harvest, yeah.
Very nice lady.
Does a lot of good work.
But she would be an example of one, she doesn't have an audit, so I had to guide her a little bit, this is kind of what you need to put together so that we can comply with the law.
So, this is as of July 1st, so the next application that comes in could not be eligible till next July 1st, I think?
No, right now, I haven't, we haven't considered anything, so you've got to decide, it may be October before, or December before we finally have formalized the procedure, and then we announce, hey, you gotta give us all the documents, and then we'll proceed from there.
And that is taking it up with, you said around $2,100, if you had it significantly lower to where you could bring in new people, then, I mean, you take 30,000, divide it by, say, 500, and that'd tell you how many organizations that you would, you'd be open to that would allow new ones to come in over time, rather than just cutting them off and saying, we can't do anymore.
That's basically 60 organizations.
That's a lot.
I mean, you could have 60 or 14, I mean, it's whatever y'all want to do.
And it may never ever get to 60, but we're looking at it long-term, not just today. We should be, I think.
Yeah, we should be progressing for the future.
That's true. I'm just throwing out, we're talking, I don't know how you would quote, be fair and equitable to maybe organizations that are out there that don't know they have an opportunity to apply unless you publicize in some way, say, hey, we're looking to allocate $30,000 to organizations, if you're interested, stop by town hall, get an application, and have everything in by this date, then the council will decide how it's allocated.
Is that something that we could consider, maybe publish, publish it maybe once a month? I mean, I, I'm just, I'm throwing.
The possibilities are, we could advertise on our website, advertise on Facebook, post it here, and then put it on the agenda, it'll be on the, once we get a plan, then they can come, they can run the agenda to award whatever.
But they have, it almost has to be a continuous lie, at least for a month, to let.
We can keep advertising it, and you have, up until the $30,000 is gone, that's how y'all want to do it.
Do you think it would be wise to, like you say, if we had our first year, say, we did have it down to, and that's just what I'm throwing out, because I haven't heard anything else yet, but if it was at a 500 cap times 14, whatever that number is, the excess that's left over, would it be advantageous for us as, for our budget to say, I don't know if we have this ability already, but if we didn't, to say that money can be allocated, maybe we can move that over into something else since it's not being used this year?
Yeah, you can always do budget numbers.
Or in our, section six of our ordinance allows us to move $10,000 from one department to another department within the same fund.
Yeah. Could you set a hard, drop-dead date somewhere in the future and not put a cap on it, and just have us leave you this thing out without, without having a set? I, I like the idea of not being handcuffed, is that, is that possible?
I mean, we, we could advertise it, we can collect all the stuff, and if you want, all special call meetings, sit here, and you guys can.
all special call meetings, sit here and you guys can have them in and say, okay, man, they only got 500, we want to give them a million, whatever y'all want to do. Y'all, y'all can do it however y'all want to do it, we just need to have that plan in place, so we can tell people what they need to do.
You could take an approach, Mr. Amerisian, and if you're interested in applying, here's what you need to do, and it must be in by this date, if it's not, you won't be considered. And then if you get three applications, you allocate it accordingly, if you get 30, allocate the $30,000 accordingly.
I mean, I think that's probably the most technical, applicable place. And maybe in the future, maybe next year, we can have an actual meeting with the organizations before the paperwork, but I'd say, this is the paperwork we need, it's due by August 30th, and then they may streamline the process.
You know, you don't have to allocate them all at the same time, you can do it piecemeal if you wanted to, and then when the $30,000 is gone, it's gone, it's gone.
Technically, you don't have, we don't have to distribute it until June 30th, 2024. But, it's not waiting that long.
And I've got a question for y'all, what if an organization applies, we give them an allotted amount of money, and we still have $10,000 over here, and this organization applies out, we still have money, can they apply again for more money? That's something to think about, I mean, you've got to, have all this stuff in place, so it doesn't come up.
I think if we allow that, we would have to have some explanation as to why.
They needed more money.
A little bit more explanation, a specific, probably.
That's what I'm saying, you have to think about this, that's going to come up. So you have to think about putting that into how you distribute the money, say, use a one-time dispersment, or if we have funds over, it'll be a first come, first served, whatever you all want to do.
Well, it looks like to me, with all these organizations, that, that's not going to be a problem, having an excess, you know, it was, we give.
We're going to have, we'll have to cut some if we do the same thing we did last year.
Exactly, and so, why, I don't know that we necessarily need to consider the possibility of giving another, more to somebody else, because we don't have enough to give right now.
Well, what I'm saying is, let's say, five of these organizations decide not to apply this year, so we're going to have an excess amount of money, right?
Bad chance on that.
Well, I'm just saying, but just like the Boy Scouts, they haven't applied in the last two years, they can apply this year. So that throws another one in there. Smith County Events Committee could apply, because they do events in Carthage. Any, we could have 15 or 20 other people say, hey, well, they're giving out money, and apply, so we don't know where we're at, that's what I'm saying.
Maybe if the Boy Scouts District sent us a letter, they didn't send the application, and didn't send the appropriate documents.
Right.
And the most that we give right now is the Chamber, how much, is it $9,000 and...
$9,300.
I can see doing a hard cap of $10,000 on any one, without them being able to double tip and get the two in a given year.
Just as long as there's a, a, a function in place, that would be helpful. If you don't usually, can you add it to the next year's?
Yeah, we, yeah, it doesn't go away.
But actually, no, technically, it doesn't roll into the next year, but we've got to do a new budget ordinance.
It stays in the budget, it doesn't add to the $30,000.
It stays in the check and you can't, yeah. And if I want you on it some more.
I mean, it's a pretty big decision on how you're going to do this, I mean, it's probably going to hurt some feelings.
Anybody got any ideas? Everybody satisfied, are they happy with the discussion?
I just like Casey's idea of, of prorating, based on what we did last year, and...
Then, then I guess we'll just have to, we'll vote on it in the regular meeting, we can't do it here.
Right. Just you have to decide if you want to add the new organization.
True. And then it, and then how much?
It'll be, it'll be a pro-rated, just like everything else, because the cap's 30.
Who is the new organization again? That's a plan. Yeah, the lady right behind, London Harvest that hands out stuff.
Eternal Harvest.
It's, it's...
Ramona Denny.
It's Ramona Denny.
That's right, that's exactly right. Oh yeah, wonderful lady.
Yes.
Yeah, she, and she does a lot, she does a lot of food. That'd be one I think would be, I mean, she definitely gives out a lot of food.
If we decided how much we want to give her, or set the amount, and then prorate everything including her, we would be all right.
That's fine. I mean, it's, it's y'all's, it's what y'all feel like. You can sit here and say, well, I think the library deserves a $5,000 more than the manual house, or whatever. It's what y'all decide.
What, what in everybody's mind for this new 501(c)(4) would be, in y'all's opinion, appropriate?
I'd say no less than 500, because that's the lowest, that's the lowest donation we've given, so if it's 500 or above, it'd be my guess.
Okay.
I could see, I, I could see, like Sam said, doing 1,000 and then prorating it for the previous year.
Right, okay.
But that's, that's your call.
All right, we're back in L.L.A., we voted on, obviously, the...
Yeah, we can't, we can't do anything right now.
But that approach doesn't address the manual house, which council person pulled up last, if it was, it was only 500.
Which I, I kind of got a personal feel about it, but I thought that was low.
Yeah, I don't consider, that's why we need a procedure in place, and how we can fairly get this coming out. Not just say, well, okay, I'll give this one 500, and I'll give this one 10,000, I'll give this one 200, there's no method.
Get $1,000, come back down.
There's got to be, there's got to be a method, too. There's got to be some logic behind it.
And we, we can codify it, once the decision is made, make it as a resolution, an ordinance, whatever our attorney says it has to be, but that will guide us here on out, this is how it's going.
So on your application, is there a space for how much money they're asking for?
Uh, there is not.
That's one way to maybe do it, saying we've got $30,000 to allocate to charities and nonprofits. Put your application in, every month you have a meeting, okay, we got these applications in, how much money they're asking for, you put it to a vote, you agree, Boy Scouts gives $500, or Boy Scouts gives 10,000, no, I think that's too high, let's, let's give them 2,000 instead. And you can just do that, month after month, until the 30,000 is gone. Then it's sort of a first come, first served situation, if you want the money, get your application in early.
If I'm one of those organizations, I'm asking 30,000.
That would be my problem, that would be my problem.
I'll take 30,000, please.
Because you'd be crazy not to, if no one else applies, you get 30 grand.
What about this though? It's just a thought. Civic organizations, we break out percentage-wise, what they've historically gotten out of the $30,000, okay? So they won't get as much as they've been getting in the past, but it'll be a prorated share based on what we've done in the past. Then that leaves, say it's $25,000, so it leaves $21,000 left. At that one time, my big thing is, do you want to solicit people, because some may not know, like Miss Ramona didn't know, okay, until now she come up and figure that out, or how do you want to go about advertising to people that this is available to them? Then select, you've got to decide anyways. You can say, okay, our policy is, we'll give no more than 1,000 to a 501(c)(3), okay? And then you've got to determine who it is. And you may just have enough information tonight to chew on it, and come back and decide what your best thoughts are. And maybe one approach would be, that you write down what you think this might be, and we can put it together, distribute it to everybody, and next meeting, yes, call it, you can discuss it then, it's okay, these are the different proposals and thoughts.
In the meantime, we can actually start requesting applications, because that's going to give it a cutoff date, that way you know, we will know how many we've got to start off with. And we, we can tweak it throughout the years, if it gets better, you know, a better idea later on, we can change it.
Just after that, then you will need to know if we want to put something in the paper, requesting solicitations, application dates. And if you get your 500 applications.
All right.
I'm not agreed when you get there.
I'm going to call the workshop to a close, or give you five minutes, use the rest of the stuff, we have a public hearing in five minutes. We have a public hearing in five minutes. So the, all the comments on the ordinance on the. On orders number CO two zero two three zero six zero one dash two, in order to adopt amendments to the two thousand and eighteen edition of the Internal Building Code, IBC, which is currently adopted by the town of Carthage, Tennessee. Do we have anybody in here wanting to speak on that matter?
Did your tablet sign it up?
No, it just went, it's just broke.
Mine didn't click inside. He emailed my email.
That's all I needed to know, that you didn't have to put the old one in, because I didn't think we were giving an old word.
I was waiting, I was waiting, he had pick me buttons on me.
Well, good to know, because I thought IP to help fix Sam's, because I didn't have Sam's password.
I was looking at it, trying to guess, and I'm like, I know what it is.
Oh, I know what mine was.
Like, I'm just gonna not put that in there, and if Alain let me in.
Yeah. These things are crazy.
All right, I guess no one's gonna figure that out, we'll close that out, and we'll be back at six o'clock for the regular meeting. The county council meeting, our July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the order, Janie Elton, roll please. All right, I guess no one's gonna figure that out, we'll close that out, and we'll be back at six o'clock for the regular meeting. Okay. But wait.
July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, order. Janey, open call roll, please.
Councilman Elroy?
Here.
Councilman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Apple?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
He's here.
Somewhere.
Councilman Norrie?
Here.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking of you.
I'm here. I'm here.
I'm here.
I appreciate it.
Uh, Mayor, may I make a motion? I make a motion that we move number nine citizens' concerns up, uh, above number four tonight, so they can have a chance to speak before we get into this substance of everything.
Good with that.
I'll second.
You want a roll call vote?
Yes.
Councilman Elroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Apple?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
Let's hear Peters.
Yes.
So, we're going to do citizens' concerns. Anyone who's here to speak on any matter can speak. Uh, just when you step up to the podium, just give your name, your address, and then you have a two-minute time limit on your comments.
I'll be glad to speak first. That would be fine. I'll try to limit it to two minutes as best I can. I'm Sarah Smith, Sarah Smith. Address is, uh, one-twenty Irving Drive in Carthage, Tennessee. Um, I want to address, and I've sent a couple of emails to y'all concerning that. We have a rate increase of thirty-three percent that has, um, been imposed on the citizens, and I'm kind of questioning where that came from, because when we left our, our office back in October of last year, we had, uh, been allocated to the town of Carthage over twenty-five million dollars in water and sewer, uh, to help our water and sewer. And I've got the letters here. I sent those to you. But I'm going to read real quickly just what they, what we were allocating. It was a, almost a seventy percent average principal forgiveness, uh, which means the citizens would have only been liable for thirty percent plus tax or interest. So, here's what they gave us. Um, first of all, twenty-five thousand for water storage tank improvements, which would be a mixer that we needed very greatly for our tank. Uh, the next one was four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand for improvements to our service pumps, installing agitators, filters, and then ten million, six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand for replacing all of the water lines in town, except the ones that are already replaced. Then, on the clean water side, we got three million, six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-six-hundred, and this would be for improvements to our sewer plant, all kinds of things, including a press, which they really would like to have down there to help this large situation. And then, we got twelve million, three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight for, uh, sewer lines, to replace every sewer line in town that needs it. Uh, there was a go-forward on that. I sent all of the emails that I had gotten, all these letters forward, uh, places, uh, hard copies of all on the mayor's desk before I left. And as best I understand, we had a reserve when I left in our water and sewer fund of seven million eighty-nine, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine thou- seven million eight-hundred-and-nin- excuse me, seven million eighty-nine thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine. That would have more than covered, almost covered all of the thirty percent match that we need in our water and sewer. So, I've asked to have an accounting for where that, what happened with that, that, uh, allocation that we had from TDEC. I also have concerns because we had that much money on reserve and because we had those loans available to us. How did we come up with a budget increase or amendment to increase our water and sewer for thirty-three percent? Where did that number come from? Because I don't, don't see where that would have happened. And also, it was already put into the budget and sent to the state before it was legally voted on twice in an ordinance and having the public, uh, hearing that was needed to be had here. And if you look at your municipal code, um, which I brought just a copy of, underwater and sewer, which is section eighteen, eighteen-one-twenty, I believe it is, oh, one-twenty-six. Here is the, um, the schedule of water and sewer rates. It's an ordinance that's in our municipal code, and it's a law. The only way you can change this is by, by an amendment, an ordinance to amend this with two readings and a public hearing. So, the public has a right to, to chime in about this, and that's only fair. So, there wasn't two readings, uh, before this was sent out to the people to pay. So, I am believing that all of the overage, that all of our citizens have paid for this, probably is needed to be reimbursed to them, because they weren't legally, uh, you weren't supposed to be charging them that until this has been passed. Also, um, if you look at the ordinance that was passed the last time around and how it's configured, it specifies in there exactly why this increase was needed. I took a brief look at the ordinance you're going to pass tonight, or vote on tonight. All it says is that you took a vote to put it in your budget. There's no indication in there why we need thirty-three percent additional money paid to you. And if I, if I'm correct in here, and we have seven million, a little over seven million in our reserve coming in from our money administration to yours, I don't, I, there's a lot of questions. Why do we need to give our citizens this?
Okay, we, we got a good explanation for you in your two minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you for speaking.
May I say one more thing? I think the constituents deserve a little bit more warning about this kind of thing, because I would say a majority of the people in town, this is going to hurt financially. Not everybody is able to pay this money, because a lot of people are on a fixed income. So, that needs to be taken in consideration with this. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for talking.
I appreciate it.
Um, does the council have a problem if we address this issue before we get any more citizens' concerns? Is that why we just not get out?
That's fine.
It's fine. Mr. Ezell, would you, uh, address that, please? Mr. Jones, where's Steve?
Steve Jones right here.
Hey, you want to take the first, uh, approach to that issue?
Sure, I'll, I'll talk about the SRF program. Steve Jones, Water Management Services, uh, Engineering Firm, retained by the town to, uh, assist in the water and sewer, uh, system. Uh, so, first thing everybody, uh, I guess, to make sure everybody understands, is SRF is a loan program, and they do provide what's known as principal forgiveness. So, uh, the way the program works is you put in project profiles. Uh, in February of each year, uh, those get ranked out by the SRF program, and then the SRF program decides whether or not, where you are on this ranking list for funding, based on the amount of funding that they have. Once you're ranked, they tell you if you'll give principal forgiveness and how much principal forgiveness that you are able to get on the amount of money that you're going to borrow. Any money that's not forgiven, you have to pay back to the SRF loan program. So, let's say it's ten million dollars and you're getting a seventy-thirty split. So, you're getting seventy percent grant, paying back thirty percent. So, over that period of the loan, you have to pay back three million dollars, and at the same time, you have to cover the depreciation on the entire ten million dollars. So, you have to bring in thirteen million dollars worth of revenue over that period of time of that loan. So, you know, think of it like, you know, you've got a bank account that's got a hundred thousand dollars in it. You make five thousand dollars a month, but every month you spend more money than you make. Eventually, you run out of money. So, the way that the comptroller's office looks at it is you have your cr- cash accrual basis, which is an account that probably has seven million dollars in it. But that's accruing because you're covering depreciation. If you go two years in a row without covering depreciation, so your net position is negative, then the comptroller's office from the state of Tennessee comes in, forces you to do a rate study, and then forces you to do an increase to make sure that that net position is positive. So, as you spend money, you don't just have to cover the amount of money that you're spending in that loan. You have to cover the amount of depreciation for that loan. So, as construction costs have continued to increase, the amount of depreciation has increased substantially, and so it puts you in a bad net position. And so, working with Scott and the mayor, uh, you know, we've looked, we looked, we went through everything that was available, and, you know, Scott being the, uh, CMFO, you know, we looked at how much cash was on hand and how much the revenue source was, because cash on hand, you can't just turn around and spend, because that's the money that you have collected over time to cover depreciation. So, you can't necessarily just spend that. So, going through that, Scott was able to come up with a number that your rate structure supported, and so then everything was sent back to. So, then components of each of those projects were selected in order to maximize the amount of grant funding that you could get, but only up to the amount that you could financially support.
I do have a question. I, I'm a little confused, because I was told that, but I was told that-
You know that you're not supposed to speak out of turn, correct?
May I speak to this?
I know, ma'am. If he gets done, you may just speak.
So, any questions from the council on that? If, hopefully I didn't confuse anybody. It, it, it gets convoluted, because you have to cover the depreciation part of it. It's not just like getting a personal loan for something. It, it, it doubles up on how much revenue you have to generate.
You ready to take over, Scott? Just hang on a second, Mayor. Former Mayor.
And I'll read this for the benefit of the public, uh, and the citizens. On February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, the mayor, Water Sewer Fund Department heads, and I met with Stephen Jones, our engineer, for the water sewer projects to review the drinking water and clean water award letters. Collectively, we agreed that the town was unable to create or complete twenty-eight million, one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars of projects in twelve months, even if we could receive all of those funds. We spoke with Felicia Freeman, who is the technical team manager in March of twenty twenty-three for the Tennessee Department, uh, Environment Conservation concerning the aforementioned award letters. During this conversation, Ms. Freeman assured us there are no one-hundred-percent SRF loan forgiveness programs as stated in a citizen's email dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And SRF loans are only allocated if the state money is available, based on the priority list and whether the federal funds are available to TDEC. At the very best, even if we could complete twenty-eight million, one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars of, of projects in twelve months, which is not practicable, we would be borrowing ten to fourteen million dollars, which the town could not service the debt, even if TDEC approved the loans, which part of the full process is they will evaluate our liquidity. They'll evaluate our existing debt and existing funds that we have available. The town would have to match ten to fourteen million dollars in cash of SRF, SRF loans from our own funds. These funds do not exist, nor is there any grant money available to match this amount. We are in dialogue with Stephen Jones to formalize a five-million-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar SRF loan for Smotherman, Carmack, and Hillcrest for FY twenty-three, twenty-four, which has been bu- budgeted. Once all engineering plans are complete, uh, we will be able to publicize bids for water line and sewer line replacements for these streets. In conjunction with these line upgrades, we have budgeted for and planned repaving from the general fund for these streets. We submitted revolving fund questionnaires totaling five-million-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars for SRF drinking water and clean water loans on March eighth, March eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Barring five million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of SRF loans in FY twenty-three, twenty-four, will add to our existing debt of one million, eight-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, reaching or exceeding our debt policy target limit of seven million, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand by approximately five-hundred-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. And that all depends upon how much of forgiveness that we would get. But that was a resolution that we passed, uh, CR two-zero-two-one-zero-nine-zero-two. Although there may be debt forgiveness on SRF loans, as Steve mentioned, we still have to capitalize and depreciate the full project cost. If we could pay for and complete twenty-eight million, one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars of projects within the SRF window, which is not practicable, we would add approximately seven-hundred-and-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventeen dollars of annual depreciation expense to the water sewer fund. That's the water sewer fund profit and loss. Our existing rate increase in itself would not be sufficient to maintain a regulatory profit under those conditions. We have been allocated seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents of American Rescue Plan Act funds. These funds have been budgeted for FY twenty-three, twenty-four receipt and are allocated to the Smotherman-Carmack projects, as well as a TDEC mandated asset management plan for about forty-eight thousand and grant administration, which is going to be approximately twenty-seven thousand. We will require the SRF lo- loan identified in paragraph six above to complete these projects. The contract for this grant was received the week of July third, twenty twenty-three, and was signed by the mayor on July tenth, twenty twenty-three. As you know, there is dialogue between Smith County and municipal leaders of each incorporated municipality in the county concerning a county-wide wastewater treatment plan. We are awaiting the final decisions on moving forward with this project.
Scott?
Yep. Yep.
Interject? We have now, uh, got together, we're applying for a seven-million-dollar competitive grant through TDEC, and with the way we're ra- ranked and rated, it's going to be a ten percent match, because we're doing it as a joint community. So, what that means is for seven million dollars, we're going to divide seven-hundred-thousand dollars with a debt between four entities. So, it's a very minimal thing to, to do, we have to do, because if we try to build a sewer plant ourselves, for the city, it's going to be about thirty or forty million dollars. So, as a co-op, we'll get more funding and more grants, and it'll be a lot cheaper on the citizens in the long run. So, we do forward that already.
Stephen Jones has been retained by the county for this project exploration, and I believe Mayor just addressed it, uh, there's been further steps moving forward. Therefore, we do not recommend moving forward with SRF tracking number CWPRL two-thousand-twenty-two-dash-ninety-one, awarded October nineteenth, twenty-two. Just today, we have heard from the Corps of Engineers on the Cumberland River Bank Erosion Project. Although we have budgeted for it to the tune of, uh, a little over a million dollars of our share of it, per the Corps of Engineers, we're hoping this project will not be required due to the county project exploration for the wastewater treatment plant. We've already completed in the drinking water treatment plant a new control panel that's identified in SRF tracking number DWPRL two-zero-two-two-dash-thirty-six in FY twenty-two, twenty-three. It's already there. To me, the water sewer rate increases is a, is another issue that I think we have Andre speak to, as far as the ordinance and, and that kind of thing.
We're already aware, but we've already got a plan of base implements.
A copy of this letter is given to all the council persons. We've taken, it appears to me, all necessary and practical steps to implement the plans to construct and finance our projects within our capital asset plan for drinking and clean water. The reason Smotherman-Carmack and Hillcrest were chosen was because of the inflow and infiltration study, which Mayor Smith had implemented and has given information that, that's why we prioritize those projects. Questions?
All right. No, ma'am, you've had your two minutes. That's, the resolution says you have two. Well, if you want to go through a big again, go ahead.
There's just, I just do want to follow up just a second, if you don't mind. And I do appreciate everything in history that I've said, because I think he's a wonderful engineer. We worked together for over a year for this. I appreciate what, uh, CFO Ezell has said. I do want to point out, though, uh, maybe this has been missed, because this was all discussed last year, but each of these letters that we got is a separate loan that we could take out. So, we did not have to take out the full twenty-five million. We could simply start with the ten million that was allotted to us to replace the water lines, or decrepit here in town. We could have started with that.
Can I interject something real quick?
Let me, please.
No, let me just, I'll, I'll help you out really quick. He just explained to you, we did apply for that. We've got, uh, five million dollars, that's what we could afford to borrow. That's all we could afford.
That's, that's separate from this, because I've-
It's an SRF loan, it's the same.
Yes, but it, it's a different one.
Those were all turned back in.
I know, because we didn't do this by May thirty-first, which was the deadline, unfortunately.
Because we couldn't do it, we couldn't enact those.
Well, all I'm saying is there, there was a possibility for ten million dollars where the citizens would have had only thirty percent to pay back. And the way it was explained to all of us when we were first working on this, this is more like a line of credit than it is a specific loan. So, until the project was actually finished, that's when the loan would start, because we wouldn't know the exact amount to start with. So, it was really nice, and I'm sorry that we didn't go forward with it, because this was a windfall for the city, unfortunately. And I'm seeing that now our budget is increased by, from seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight, if I have my glasses right, um, that the citizens are going to now be paying an additional, almost four-hundred-thousand, three-hundred-thousand. So, again, I just don't understand, I don't understand why this wasn't followed up to begin with. It was a real windfall for our city, even if we'd only taken one of the loans to follow up on.
I, I understand your concerns.
And, and I appreciate everything Mr. Jones did to help us, and TAU did to help us, TDEC did to help us. We were one of the few cities in this whole area that, that got these kind of loans. They were really highly sought after. So, I'm sorry that we didn't follow up on that. And again, when we address the ordinance, I do want to know why citizens weren't part of this process and why we were charged this, this fee before it was even made legal and why this was put in our budget to go to the state before it was even legal. And again, I appreciate everything everybody is doing, but I just think it would be very nice to keep our citizens informed and part of this process.
I mean, we did, we did advertise the ready trees, so we tried, but wouldn't, you know.
Anytime you start dealing with state revolving fund loans, American Rescue Plan, Appalachian Regional Commission grants and all of it, it's a confusing area. Any person could be, uh, confused by it. There's no free money, uh, very little free money for these projects. Even if we had seventy percent of whatever it is, we still have to pay those funds. SRF is a reimbursement, it's not a line of credit. Okay? So, we have to expend the money, and then we get reimbursed. Okay? And so, we got to have the cash. At best, the water sewer fund, which is the fund we're talking about, at best, since I've been CFO, has been around three million dollars. We pay cash for the Main Street water line to a tune of one million, twenty thousand dollars, uh, roughly. So, that, we are at, right at two million dollars of SRF funds available. The money the mayor is speaking to is in the general fund, and you have those financials, it's only, it's about five-point-seven, but it's not water sewer fund. We could make a loan to ourselves, but comptroller's office doesn't really want us to do those sorts of things, okay? And we wouldn't have a match, which is an excellent point that the mayor brings up. In my professional opinion, uh, we are borrowing right at what we can do. And even if we had all the money, we couldn't complete the projects, because how long did it take Futural Alley? How long did it take Main Street? It's just not practicable for us. We've taken steps to go as far as we can with what we have. I wish it were true, I wish it was that way. But Felicia Freeman assured me it's not that way, okay? And maybe people need to call Felicia Freeman, Technical Services Manager at TDEC, and have them explain further.
I actually did that this way. May I, Scott, may I help you understand this, because this is from your bank?
We don't have a four-hour meeting.
We don't have business doing this back and forth.
What is this, water and sewer position?
Ma'am?
You're out of order.
Scott? Scott? We're done. She can come up here and say she wants to come up and talk with everyone. Anyone next?
I do want to push one more thing.
No, ma'am, no.
Will you have a hundred percent?
No, ma'am, no. No, ma'am.
I'm Stephanie Winfrey. Um, I live at seven-twenty-two Jefferson Avenue East. Um, I've got several things, but I think I can get them out, because I talk fast. First, I would really like to see, um, better transparency and public notices that are equitable for all citizens, whether or not they can afford to buy a newspaper, because the only place that these meetings were publicly notified that I could find was the Credit Union, and you had to pay to get that. I would like to see them on our website.
They're always on City Hall, and they're always on our Facebook. I know that, because I've-
With the workshops, too?
Yes, it's on the bottom, it says workshops at what time.
They're, they're in the paper.
Okay, they're in the paper, I know that, but I didn't see them on Facebook anywhere, but I could have just missed it.
There's no perfect system, we know that.
I would like, I would like to see them on the front of the website and maybe available in the library that people go in and out of. The perfect system would be some sort of digital sign on Main Street that everybody can see with public notices and event notices, but that's something y'all have to budget. I would also like, um, better ways to contact my council members, because the only thing available is an email, whereas for the school board and the commission, they have phone numbers and addresses. And I don't know why we don't have phone numbers, because I can't do anything but email, and I know myself, I lose emails all the time. Third and fourth? I never saw anything about the water increase either, and I would have liked to. Um, I would like to have known. I don't know much about it, I haven't had much time to look into it. I was sent resources, but I, like, I don't know enough to speak. I just know I would have liked to have known before the increase hit my water bill. And I don't know what better system.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What, what month was it put on the water bills?
It's put on the water bills, uh, the month, last month, before they went out. Before the increase, they were on the bills.
Yes, we put a lot on the actual water bills, too, so. We also-
Like a notice that it was going up?
Yes, it's on the one.
And on the paper, and on the Facebook.
One-hundred percent honest, I have auto pay set up, and a lot of people do. So, I don't even look at that when I get it. So, I didn't see that. Like I said, there's no perfect system, but maybe we can try to figure out a better system that is easier for everybody to get the public notices. Phone numbers. Um, I know you all are voting on the two of my committee's street closures today, one of which being Hometown Halloween. Did you all receive the email I sent you with the survey? So, you've seen those numbers, I'm not going to waste your time going over them. The thing I do want to talk about, um, because you know, and if you have questions when you come to it, you can ask me anything about Hometown Halloween. Back-to-school bash, we put in a proposal for the street closure, because that is the easiest, quickest, and I didn't know, we didn't know how else to word anything else. We, we know that it does not have to be closed for that event, and there are other options, and we are more than willing to be the guinea pig on how can we make an event that's supposed to bring shoppers downtown and have kids downtown safe without closing the road? I don't know what that would look like. I have thoughts, but we would need city help and input to do that. So, we put this, this is the best, this is the one method we know to put an event in front of you guys, and that can open the conversation for how can we do that? But Halloween, I truly believe there is no other option. There are up to fifteen-hundred to two-thousand kids on that square. But the back-to-school bash is not going to be that many, and we know that. So, any questions for me? Yes?
I've got two thoughts on it. First, I, I initially was thought there would be a way to not close Main Street for the Halloween thing, but I've reconsidered that, and I think we do. I could see, I could envision the situation with, but, back-to-school bash, that there's not going, shouldn't, there's probably no need to be crossing the street a lot, because to my knowledge, none of the businesses on the east side of Main Street carry any products that are really back to school.
School, clothes, and my store also does. I have, I, we usually have pencil cases and backpacks, and then all the clothes.
Then, you've answered my question.
That, that was it, that was two? Okay. All right, thank y'all.
Anybody else need to speak? All right.
I'm, I'm going to speak, Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
My name's Justin Maldon, most of y'all know me. I've spoken with some of you guys prior to this meeting. I had some concerns with the water rate increases, not with what you did. As, as I've spoken to all of you, I agree with the increases. The increases are needed, the increases are, are necessary for what you guys want to do. But I think maybe the process and the way it played out needs to be examined. Maybe need to learn from how it was done, and going forward, uh, maybe reexamine how that process was done, because I think a lot of the public was unaware of what was going on. And I also think, based off the state statute, as a city, as a town, you're a political subdivision of the state of Tennessee, and you have to operate within the bounds of the state of Tennessee. From what I have researched and understood, as a public utility board, operated as a municipality, you guys have to pass rate increases via ordinance, via specific ordinance, and if you have any change in the base rate, it is considered a local tax increase, just like a property tax, and must so then be treated as such, which means it will be subject to public hearing. And you got to have input, you have to do a public notice, just like you'd have to do a public notice for any tax increase. As far as I know, those things didn't occur. I don't think there's anything malicious done. I'm not saying that the city did anything malicious, but from a standpoint of doing things properly, I don't want there to be any liability to the city for doing things potentially in a way that y'all shouldn't have done them. I would ask that you guys pay attention to certain procedures and stuff, just to make- sure things are done. I don't know if y'all are aware of this, and if I'm wrong, and I would ask y'all to go review it, when y'all passed the second reading of your budget ordinance in May, that was done via voice vote, not via roll call vote. I even double-checked it just to make sure. Y'all voted on an amendment via roll call vote, but when you actually passed the budget, it was done via voice vote. Now again, don't think anything was malicious, it was unanimous anyway, end result, doesn't matter. I just don't wanna see liability for the city because procedures aren't being followed in things, and something to come of it later. So don't disagree with the end result of your actions, so I want y'all to understand that. Procedurely and communication-wise, I think, you know, I would just ask that you guys examine that, try to do a little bit better job going forward to make sure the public is, is a little bit more aware. Because I'm sure, as a representative of the county, even though I have nothing to do with the city, I've gotten calls about the water rate increases. So I have nothing to do with that, direct them to you guys, but it's enough of a concern because I do live in the city too. People, the public, it's hard to get things out to them, they don't understand that I have nothing to do with the city, so I've gotten some inquiries into it as well, so that, you know, so the understanding of the public, I get it, I know you're not gonna be able to communicate every single thing with them, you're not gonna reach everybody, not everybody's gonna understand, so just wanted to throw that out there. I don't disagree with what you did, just ask you maybe learn a little bit from some of the things that occurred, and learn from it, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore?
I guess I'm gonna speak. My name is Michelle Green, I live here in the city, and whenever the new councilmen's all got together, didn't have no way to get in touch with any of you. I sent a letter to the mayor, I got a letter from the city attorney saying that there was no telephone number or anything out to get in touch with you. So we need to be able to get in touch with you councilmen. Do you know how we can do that? Only by email? I think it's good to talk verbally to someone instead of email behind the screen. So how do we get your phone numbers? How do we get in touch with you if we have? A card? Really?
It's got all my numbers on it.
Well, what about everybody else? What if you don't wanna talk to just one? What if you wanna talk to everyone and voice your opinion?
I agree with you, there needs to be more, I mean, I don't have a big problem with putting it on Facebook.
Can we let the attorney?
Yeah.
I'm sure, like, she's speaking about, she followed a public records request, and of course, if there was a public record that listed all of the councilman's phone numbers, you'd be entitled to inspect and copy that. However, there is no such public record, and the city's not required to compile, sort through and compile information in response to a public records request. We're not required to create a record in response to a public records request. To your point of when do you talk to the city council and address them, what's your concerns? Right now.
Well, everything right now, but what if something occurs?
Well, the councilman gave you his card, you can talk to him.
What if I don't wanna talk to him? What if I wanna talk to other people more than one?
You can come here, you don't have to wear a helmet. And voice your opinion if you want to.
Come where? Here to the meeting?
Where you're standing right now.
Okay, okay, well, that's just what I wanna know, because I just thought, you know, this is our town too, you know.
It is your town, not too.
That's what I'm saying.
And if any, any of these fine people wanna give you their cellphone number, which I'm sure some of them do, you know, they're free to do that.
No, because I get asked all the time.
Let me ask this question. I know, is there a way possibly through the city, maybe we can get, you can get those cheap cellphones, maybe the city can provide the councilman with cellphones with a number that is attached that the people could have, I mean, that's an option?
This is a lot to keep up with right here.
Hang on, guys.
Could I use all of my two minutes? Can I say something else? Okay. Because I meant to say something else about the being able to communicate. We can come here and talk to y'all, but currently on all of the agendas, the citizens' concerns are after you all vote on things, and I don't know why that was moved. I would really like to see it moved back to the beginning, because there's no point in us coming here to talk if you've already voted on all the things on the agenda. And for the buying phones, I personally don't wanna see my taxpayer money pay for another phone for somebody when I ran for office and I was willing to give out my cellphone number, so.
But also, I hate to say this, it's got that requirement for them to do that, it's up to each individual councilman. That's why we gave them the, at least they've got this now, before they even got these or emails, so. We're moving in the right direction. All right, is that everybody for Justice Karsus? All right, first item on the agenda is consider approval for minutes of last meeting.
What should they approve?
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is consideration of invoices over ten thousand, not previously approved budget, there's none currently. We have a, I have to add a department and committee report, it's gonna be Steve Key from the wastewater treatment plant, because we had a development this afternoon pop up that's pretty tough that we had to kind of work on. So I'm gonna let Mr. Key go and tell his. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I skipped one off the plane. What I wanted to, I've got three things. One of them is we had the carnival, the jail, the council of the carnival, on June twenty-third, twenty-fourth, received a lot of deposit stuff about that, I just wanted to tell, it was a housekeeping job by our volunteers, we had the volleyball team, the football team out there, I mean, I think it was a thousand toys or something y'all gave away during, was that about right? About a thousand toys? Gave away about a thousand toys, so it was a very good event, it was free to the public because, I mean, that's what we try to do, do things for the public, so I wanna give a hats off to our committee that did what they did. I mean, it's hard to find volunteers now, and they put in the time. After the last storm, we've had another about forty-seven loads of rush, and we have to go back through, it's back down again, so we're starting in hopefully next week and make another circle through, so.
The truck's down again?
Huh?
Is that what you said, the truck's down?
No, we're gonna make another pass, you see what?
I thought you said it was down again, I thought.
No, we were running rush, and then we're supposed to run the streets for the big, like, couches and stuff like that, so, and then we have other, like, we have a water leak on Jackson, so we only have one dump truck, so we have to, we're gonna come back around and pick everything else up. The last thing is the Main Street paving, it came in under budget, it was all used for the street aid fund, which had been sitting in there, and it was like four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, that's just been piling up. So it came in at about nine thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars in budget. That's including with the changing of the little piece that they kind of messed up. And that's all I've got. Now, can I hear your thoughts?
Okay, I found out about two thirty this afternoon, there's a good possibility that the contract that we sign yearly on the land rental where we apply our sludge, there's a good possibility we're not gonna be able to renew that, and that kind of blind side is because we had already thought we had a deal going, we had the contract drawed up, and, because we don't get to haul in the wintertime, summertime, we have, in between the rains, we really have to try to get the sludge out of the plant, but that's put us in a bind. I didn't know, at two thirty this afternoon, we were hauling today, and then we were told not to come back. Basically, it was a price increase on the acreage, I think they were getting offered, and I asked the question, if we matched that, can we still get the contract? And there was still not a definite yes. So I think at this point, I just want y'all to know where we are. If anybody can come up with some land rental, that would be great. I'm gonna start tomorrow, get back on the phone, and maybe look at a different way to process the sludge completely. If we get where we're self-efficient, we don't want nobody else. I have talked with Superintendent DeCorruspo, and in case of emergency situation, he's gonna try to help us out a little bit. So I just wanted y'all to know what was going on, and it's usually as business as usual on this blind side this afternoon, because we've got a lot of sludge in the plant, we gotta get it out, pass more, carry it. We'll keep you up to date with what's going on. And other than that, they did bring up the riverbank erosion and the million dollars. We got a tank, it's got a hundred and fifty thousand gallon of sludge, and that's the main thing that's close to the river, like fifteen foot. I've talked with engineers, we're looking at trying to process another tank where I can take that one completely out of the system, so we won't have to worry about it. If it's empty, don't have to worry about it. So that's our plan going forward, is get our blowers moved, some piping moved into another tank I have, get that out of the system, but it just kind of blindsides this afternoon, we thought we had everything set up, I had worked with Daniel, we had the contract done, actually already had the check made out, and found out this afternoon, there's a good possibility we're not gonna be able to get the land rental again. So we'll keep you all informed as we go forward.
How much land do we?
It's thirty acres right now, but we could get by with less, you know, we could probably get by with ten.
What's the problem? Do you have to bury it, or is there, I'm ignorant on this.
No, we apply, we have to get it through the T-DEC, that it'll park, and then we do metals tests on it, and we report that yearly. We've never had any problem with anything, we can't apply over two percent sludge as we put it on. Basically, it's not a big deal, you just gotta have the land to do it, and it's gotta be kind of flat enough you can get the truck on and spread it, so. If y'all hear anything, you let the mayor know, Scott, and, but we're gonna be working, I'm like, so, we may work toward getting a way to process it different, we're just gonna have to look at it, we weren't ready for this really, so. Wanted y'all to know what's going on.
Thank you. All right, next item on the business, unfinished business, second reading of CO two zero two three zero six zero one dash two, many of the two thousand eighteen building codes.
Motion to approve.
Is it required that we do so?
It makes it easier on citizens.
Say again?
It makes it easier on citizens. This is to lessen.
They've released, loosened some of the things.
Otherwise, if you build a brand new house, you have to sprinkle the house, you have to put it in sprinkler system by the two thousand eighteen building codes.
So if we vote to amend, you don't have to do that.
Right, we're gonna, it's gonna save people for new construction, a lot of money.
It eases some of those.
I'm making motion that we amend it, or whatever the term you want to use.
Be a second.
We just gotta be a second to his motion.
I think Sam did.
Oh, Sam seconded it?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on unfinished business is welcome signs vice banner figures.
Unless somebody else has one, I'm working on something, but I couldn't get it done today. If anybody else has something they've worked on for the month, we can talk about it, if not, we can put it on for next month. I'll have it by then.
I mean.
Did you just move it?
Okay, we'll move it. Everybody's all right with that.
All right, first item on new business is gonna be Attorney Greppen with legislative update CR two zero two three zero seven one three one.
There's a couple new laws in the state of Tennessee in relation to public meetings and some of the concerns that were brought up tonight. The first one is public chapter number two thirteen. This relates to notice of public meetings, just says that the agenda for any public meeting has to be published in a place that's accessible to the public forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. So that can be a website, an official website, the statute says, it can be posted at City Hall, it can be Facebook. It's my understanding that we're already in compliance with this, but it needs to be done forty-eight hours prior to time set for the meeting. The second one is for any public meeting, governing body has to reserve a period for public comment on matters that are germane to items on the agenda of the meeting. Again, there's a public comment period that's written into city's ordinances, so we're already in compliance with that. The only difference is the new statute says that the city can prescribe reasonable restrictions on the public comment period, like the length of time that somebody has, the number of commenters, or any other reasonable restriction, for instance, they could require that people who want to comment at meetings request to sign up beforehand. And if they do that, then you just have to publish in the notice of the meeting how somebody would sign up to speak, so that's an option. I have prepared a resolution that applies with these new statutes. Again, we're already in compliance, but it's good practice to pass a resolution adopting policies that apply with it, so we have something in writing of a procedure to follow. The first one is for public comment, the only restrictions that we've put in here that apply to the public comment period are, generally won't exceed a period of one hour, and public comments will generally be limited to three minutes per person. I know it was brought up, you know, two minutes.
We have a resolution.
We already have, I think it's a resolution. Okay, so we can, if somebody wants to amend, move to amend that to two minutes, we can pass it as amended, and again, this just says that we'll publish and approve that forty-eight hours prior to the meeting in a place that's accessible to the public.
So what we've been doing the entire time conforms with?
It is on City Hall by four P.M. on Tuesday, every Tuesday.
That's right. Again, you're already in compliance, you don't even need a resolution, but it's good practice to have a resolution, so you have procedures in mind.
Make a motion we approve with the amendment of two minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a budget amendment BA two zero two three zero seven one three dash one, CFO Wiesel.
We were trying to go ahead and get out in front of this, because we had additional information that came to us after we'd approved the budget, and so I'll just do the whereas paragraphs that, the pertinent ones. The governing body has determined that the general fund and water sewer fund expenditures require increase to account for wage and benefits study conducted by Burris, Thomas and Associates, which was approved at the prior meeting. Governing body has determined to move property codes official from general government budget to the police department budget. The governing body has determined that the sanitation fund expenditures require an increase to account for the new contract with TDS sanitation. And just a reminder there, we have contract with TDS, I think we're gonna address the water sewer rate, but the TDS amount we have to pay yet is a two dollar increase, it's eighteen fifty a month, so that one, that doesn't fall into the conversation unless the attorney has a different thoughts on that. The governing body has determined that the general fund expenditures for the police department require increase, as a new vehicle originally budgeted for expenditure in twenty-two twenty-three was unavailable until July twenty twenty-three. And the governing body has determined the general fund expenditures require increase for part-time records digitization processor. Basically, all the ordinances, and we've already got a substantial move forward on this, we're digitizing into PDF files. Once we have all the existing ordinances that we can find from eighteen oh four, they will be digitized and could be on a searchable PDF file, so that if you put in a keyword, it'll pull it up anywhere that we've got. Right now, it's a very cumbersome thing, and we got books that require weightlifting abilities in order to make use of it. So that's what that's about. And so the governing body amends, and this is what was all sent out to you, amends and appropriates planned expenditures as follows and defined by the attached budget amendment number one. General fund, it was originally six million ninety thousand five hundred and four dollars, goes to six million one hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and sixty-six. Water sewer fund, it was originally budgeted as a total one million eight hundred and thirteen dollars and six hundred and thirty-six, one million eight hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars, revised is one million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. And the sanitation fund goes from one hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred to the revised figure of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And all of these are well within the ability of what we budgeted and talked about before with the original budget. Questions?
I wanna add something to that. Scott's done a wonderful job with our money, he's put them in the public liability partners thing, and on average, each month, the city's bringing in fifteen thousand dollars of interest that we weren't getting before, before he did all this research and stuff, so we're getting fifteen thousand dollars of income just by moving money, so Scott's doing a wonderful job of that. All right. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Rourke?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kannehill?
Yes.
Councilman Penny?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
President O'Donnell?
Yes.
Okay, but motion, any opposed? All right, next item on the reading is first reading of CO two zero two three zero seven one three dash one, this is gonna be the water rate increase by a This is gonna be the water rate increase by CFO Zell and Attorney Griffin.
The most recent fiscal year budget appropriated a 33% increase for water and sewer rates. This is ordinance to amend, ordinance number 18-126 to adopt in law the schedule of rates for water and sewer as appropriated by the budget.
Give some information to the public that this facility would understand.
First, I would say any citizen that desires to go over every penny in the town's records and why any decisions were made financially, they're available to make a point with me and I'll be there till the cows come home, till all questions are answered. The rate increases, this year, we, at this point in time, based on the information that we have, we have a regulatory loss of around $23,000, which is in your financial reports. The public may not be aware that whenever you have a regulatory loss, if you do that two years in a row, the state comes in and they can tell you what your rates are going to be. So we have tried to be proactive, knowing, number one, inflationary costs have hit us in a great deal. We've had a whole lot of inflation with chemicals and any of the department heads, if you wanna add anything. We've gone from a $4,000 rental contract to a $12,000 rental contract that we may or may not be able to get. Everything that everybody's experiencing at home, the town has experienced multiplied by a few exponential points, okay? Because everybody's trying to build and capitalism says, if you want us, you gotta pay for us. And that's the American structure and that's what the town has faced. So whether we did another road or not, we have need to increase the rates, in my opinion. The thing that we need to make sure we understand is that it's hard to understand if you build a $1,020,000 water line, we have to depreciate that full cost. And so that increases our annual expenses by about $40,000 just for that project that's already done, okay? The pension costs historically, in the past few years, we have come out to the good because the market has done well and we've gotten a credit to our pension financials, okay, for the expense. Well, that piper's coming home to pay either this year, and it hasn't been released yet, or next year. And that in itself could be around the $80,000 expense. The last time the town had an increase in rates was 2016, and that was as a result of a state mandated, you gotta increase your rates, okay? Or we're gonna tell you how much to increase them. We've taken a proactive approach to try to anticipate where we are at. But even if we didn't build another water line or sewer line, we're gonna need those funds. And if we're definitely gonna do the funds or the projects that Mayor Smith had started and got rolling, we're gonna have to have that increase to fund not only paying for the debt, okay? And if you borrow money, remember, we gotta pay the debt. And the interest rates are no longer .08, it's now 2.16%. And when you start putting six zeros together, that winds up cash flow a lot of money. So the last time we had the increase, 2016, I agree with the citizens. Andre caught it a couple of weeks ago and we immediately put into steps to make correction. And we don't do it this often, so we didn't know and it's been caught.
And that's on me.
No.
It's on me.
But in any case, doing the best we can, don't wanna ever charge citizens more than they have to pay, but if we're gonna improve the quality of the water lines and the sewer lines, it will require us. And I would submit to the council and the public, if you will look at other utility districts, the town of Carthage is still very, 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 very competitive against anybody else in the county as far as the water rates. And that's due to prior administrations, mayors and council people doing the best they can. But we've been pushed into it. So where did 33% come up with? It wasn't just reached up and grab a hold of a number. That's the actual number based on anticipating, this is the projects that we're going to do, this is the inflation rate we've already experienced and what we anticipate in order to have a regulatory profit. That figure was figured out, and it is, the mayor's exactly right, it was approximately $400,000 annually. And that gets us not a great deal of surplus. But I'd be glad to answer any detail and speak to any penny that's there if anybody has further questions on it. So the rate increases were based on a mathematical equation with the best information that we have. In hindsight, and we talked about sending out over 1,000 letters to all the citizens in addition to this statement on the cards and putting it into the paper. In hindsight, which is always 2020, we probably should've sent out a letter to every citizen on the account and said, hey, be aware of this. But Cindy and Julie have done a wonderful job speaking to people and we've invited people, anybody that's called, we've said, if you want to come in and have it detailed explained, we'll explain exactly why it's there and why we felt that it was there. So we've tried to respond as best we can. Hindsight, I wish we'd sent the letter too, but sorry about that.
But one of the reasons we did was the cost. What's it, what we figured out to be about $1,000?
I might say too that it is my understanding with council approval, mayor approval, the amount that was billed in extra for this past bill, we're going to put as a credit to the next bill. And we will build under the old rates until this legislation, which we thought was there, will be be in place. Now let the attorney speak to that further.
That's correct. Take a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call please.
You have a discussion?
A little bit.
I've not been in favor of it. Not that we don't need a water rate increase, I know we do. I think we're increasing it too much. I think we're increasing it more than we have to right now. We may have to do it down the line, but I don't think we know that we have to do it down the line or how much exactly we need to do it down the line. I would like it to be closer. I know we have to make a dollar profit. If it's up to me, we'd make a dollar profit and that's how much we would increase it and that would be it. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote to increase it by 33%.
I hate to up it any, but can you name one thing in the last seven years that hasn't went up? What happened as previous councils, I don't wanna put any blame on them, but I will. You don't wanna make anybody mad. One thing you don't wanna do is increase the amount of something they're gonna have to pay. Those chickens have come on the roost now and it's accumulation.
We're at the point now where if you don't do this, if we don't do the 33% where you're not gonna do three rows this year, so y'all gotta decide which projects you wanna cut out in order to make that profit. Y'all make that decision. If you don't wanna do the three rows, but I'm gonna tell you, if you drive down those roads, the middle of the road is saggy. You know why it's saggy? Because there's no longer a sewer pipe there, the road is collapsing.
And I'll say this, I've been speaking with Scott, we've discussed this at length in meetings, discussion. And if we just let this go, and I'm like Casey, I hate to see an increase like this. This is not what we want to do. But if we don't do something at this level, the state's gonna come in and we don't know what the rates are gonna be. It's peril, it could be well above 33% and we lose control.
Well, we also have to look like, and there's not a person sitting here that enjoys the fact that we're gonna have to increase it. But if these lines deteriorate much more, we're gonna start losing sewage out, we're gonna start losing water out, and it's gonna cost us even more money, we'll be even further in hope.
Yes.
That's a lot of the problem. Everything gets pushed to tomorrow. Everything is pushed to tomorrow. If some of this would've been taken care of 10 years ago, 15 years ago, if it was cheaper, the city would have more money.
Exactly.
But I mean, you can't come in here and say, okay, every water on your sewer line is bad. They're in bad shape. There's a law coming next year by the state that they're not gonna allow copper pipes in houses. They want us to come into a house and inspect and see if they have copper pipes. And if you can't afford to fix it, the city will have to pay to fix it and put it on your water bill. That's in the legislation. So I mean, there's a lot of crazy things coming forward and I guarantee you, you probably won't find one house in Carthage that ain't got copper pipes.
This may be a difficult question to answer, but what is the average age of our system on the side streets? It's gotta be decades and decades, right?
Where's 70?
70 years, yeah, about 70 years.
So this, I mean, I'm not gonna put fault on anybody before us, but this is something you never wanna touch. And now it's hit us. You go down Jackson Avenue right now, there's three spots where there's, where there's...
Were you fixed the water leak there?
Yeah, just yesterday. At some point, it's gotta be fixed.
She's got a picture of it. My son called me and he was like, Dad, there's a water leak by the house. So we go down, it's not leaking. He goes, no, down by the road by where you turn in. I said, you live on Jackson? I said, we don't live on Jackson, son. And it was leaking pretty good and Stephanie sent me an email saying there's a water leak on Jackson. I was like, yeah. And it's right down from the water leak, we just fixed it, not even...
Not even what, 200 feet?
Yeah, so if we don't do something, either we're gonna sit here and we're gonna be buying a lot of plants, plant pipes and hope that the stuff works. We have spots in the city right now where raw sewer, which is running between two broken pipes, just taking the natural void and going into another pipe. It's horrible. I mean...
And we've actually seen the video of it.
Yeah. So every one of our sewer lines have been videotaped. So if anybody wants to come look at that and watch how bad the pipes are and wonder why we're doing this, it's not pleasant.
Again, I just wanna say, I'm not advocating for doing nothing or not doing an increase at all. I'm advocating for, I wish we, I mean, I did ask, I asked for what the, if, what 20% would look like, what 25% would look like. If I missed that email, I apologize, but I don't, I don't have that email that I know of.
Do you care if Scott addresses?
Sure, and he may have sent it. I'm not, I'm not, and he may have forgot and I didn't remind him, so I'm not putting it on anybody. I just, I would just like to see options of numbers without going to the extreme, because I think 33, that's a big number, yes.
Let's think about one more thing before we do that, okay? You've got it budgeted to make $1 profit, right?
Right.
Line on Main Street breaks, guess what? There goes your dollar profit.
I understand.
You know what I'm saying? You're so skinny, you're so, there's not enough there. If you spend $10,000 more, it's gonna take away from that. There's gotta, there's gotta be some little give in there. Because what if gas goes up to $6 a gallon? We can't pay for the gas out of the general fund, it's gotta be paid out through the sewer and water fund.
I just, I thought that's what we had the rainy day fund for, is if something bad like that happens or we don't have to. It could be so high.
Just remember, by statute, water sewer fund is a totally independent proprietary fund. It's required to make a profit, just like any other business, okay? You'll never be able to budget and plan it to get a dollar, okay? The best you can do is say, okay, we're gonna just go like we are and let it, whatever happens, if we get a loss, we get a loss and then you just, this next year, let it...
You just can't do that two years in a row.
Just can't do that two years in a row. It's not wise and nor, in my opinion, nor is it a good approach for the long-term plans. There was, the mayor put in a lot of works in the prior administration to try to put a plan together, all together, for a number of years. And that's what we're trying to implement. And we did the I and I study to see where's the most need. Well, we know what it costs to do smog and cormac. So we, everything has been planned out with the information as best we have. There will be some audit adjustments to the figure that I've given to you. I know there will be for the pension, okay? And there will be some amount adjusted for the accounts receivable because we're always two months behind. But having said that, we, if we're gonna have a profit, we've gotta do something, okay? And now, you can always lay people off, you can always stop doing projects, but people pretty much like to have the drinking water, they like the sewer to work pretty good. And we get into all kinds of environmental penalties if we don't fix these sewer lines. And so all of it's needed, it's just unfortunate that we have to do it one time. We went over all this in the budget process. We went over and I did address different percentages and then I came back and said, okay, this is the percentage that I feel like we're gonna need to do to execute the plan that Mayor Smith and Mayor Babcock have put together trying all together. I could be wrong, okay? We gotta, we need to have an increase.
I may be wrong, but I think in 2016 was the last time we hit this stage of our profit in the water sewer fund. At that time, the state did get involved and looked over our records and recommended a 60% increase. And what we did was, we decided we didn't wanna do that, so we increased it 15% that year. And then the next year, we had to turn around and add another 15% to get us profit. And what we're looking at is, is if you lower it below what we are now, then we are looking at doing it again next year.
But if, right, I don't mean to cut you off, but if we did, if we did it, say 33 and cut that in half and did one this year and another one next year, is that...
It may need to be 20 next year, so you...
Well, it's gonna get increased next year anyway.
Just to give the public an idea of what we're seeing right now, in the past 18 months, and I know all, some of y'all have home pools and stuff and you've seen what's happened to chlorine, the prices of your chlorine. In the past 18 months, the Carthage Water Treatment Plant has absorbed or has seen and absorbed an 83% increase. So we're getting to a point to where, in order to maintain what we have, it's requiring bigger increases. I, you know, nobody, no administration wants to raise the water rates.
None.
It doesn't look good. And nobody wants to pay it. I get it.
But if we don't do this now, next year, the state's gonna come in and they could very well tell us 60% again.
Well, they could say 100%.
I use chlorine as an example, but it's across the board. I mean, it's not just one chemical, it's every chemical, it's pumps, it's equipment, it's everything.
Our 2223 budget for chemicals, I ran out of my budget in December. Everything went upside. I thought I was pretty good at doing a budget, but I wouldn't have had no idea while they was doing it the same way. And what we did is we got together and got together with Goresville, we bid it out again and we cut the costs some because we got a little more competition. But we still, when HR does, we gotta have it. That's just something we can't say, well, we're not gonna have. And then I'm running a 46-year-old plant, but we put a lot of Band-Aids on it to try to keep it going. But you never know, one day or the next, what's gonna break down. And the cost is getting ridiculous.
I hate to admit it, but there's truly not one area of the city outside of, in my system, except for our water tank, which is only about six years old. There's not one area that doesn't need repair. Not, not one. So it's starting to squeeze at us if, you know, what up to try to make ends meet.
We got five pump stations.
You know, you're not supposed to speak?
Ma'am, please say something.
No, ma'am.
I just defer to what's said.
No, ma'am.
We have five pump stations that we pump the sewer water with and we have been able to, within budget, over the last three, four years, get these pumps pretty well installed in all of them. And that's probably the strong point we have, we have those stations. But now, we got the pilot project to go over the collection system with Mayor Smith. They originally was looking at about $3 million to replace all the sewer line, but because of the pilot project, I mean, we've been able to cut that down to about a million. So it saved a lot of money, it's done good. But yeah, it's just a matter that the infrastructure is very up and we've got to do something with it. We don't wanna leave it for somebody else.
And there's another thing that the state's coming in too. It's, what are those pipes? Explain the different types of pipes to people so they understand there.
The water lines?
Yeah, the water lines.
We've got the local iron pipe.
We've got a local iron pipe, and you've got AC pipe, or what they call asbestos concrete. That's in about four sections in our town. Basically, it has what I just mentioned in it.
Yes.
As long as you don't disturb it, it's okay, but if you get a break or anything in that section.
And seeing the state's mandating that all those pipes be repaired by, or replaced by what date is it? The next, next year?
I think it's twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five, we have to replace all those, and that's gonna be another increase in money. But I think there may be some grants for that, because they're making it now, so, all right. We got a motion, any more discussion? Vote all votes.
Councilman Aron?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peters?
No.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution CR 202307132, surplus inventory, Attorney General.
This comes to us from Chief Davis. The police department has two handguns on its property inventory that have been loaned out to the Sheriff's Department, produced by the sheriff. And it's my understanding that those have been loaned out for several years, and Chief asked me if there's any way we could get those off of our inventory so we don't have to account for them every single year, and wanted to donate them to the Sheriff's Department. This is a resolution to declare those handguns surplus property in the city, and to donate them to the Sheriff's Department rather than hold a public option on two handguns.
And the reason that he's getting, and those are the weapons that he carried when he was chief here, is backed up in his on-duty weapon, that's why he's got those. How long, how long, where's Brett at?
Right here, sir.
How long was Sheriff here?
He was here, well...
Five years, he was the chief of police five years.
What's that about the toll?
He started here in nineteen ninety-five.
Yes, he'd been here for a long time.
I know exactly.
He was here for a long time.
Very good man.
Yeah, I think, and my honor to work underneath him, he hired me, appreciate everything he did for the town. And I'd like, if possible, maybe the next meeting, you come up with something of recognition and present that to him, in that way.
And a motion to... Accept?
Please have you...
Make a motion.
I'll second.
You said motion to approve?
Mm-hmm. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody need to take a recess for a bathroom break?
It's a late break.
I just wasn't sure what was happening, though. All right, item number five, police new hire, new sergeant, Chief Davis, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion, recommend that we approve both hires.
I'll make the motion.
You second?
You second in my motion?
Oh, you made it, okay, I'll second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number six, is special permits, Tennessee maneuvers, back-to-school bash, Walton Days, and Hometown Halloween.
Motion to look at these separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll take them in order, y'all. Take whatever one you wanna vote.
Who, me? You looking at me?
Can we just take them in this?
Just do it in the order that they're in.
Yeah, just go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Tennessee maneuvers.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
What's next on the list?
I didn't know y'all wanted to talk about back-to-school bash. I figured y'all could read the paper. Back-to-school bash.
To be open for a road closure, correct?
Correct.
It's just a one-day event?
I'll look at the permit for you. I'm sure it's one, it's always a one-day event.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I'm not in favor of road closures besides the big stuff, and I look at that as Tennessee maneuvers and Walton Days that have been for a long time, I've just, and it's nothing personal with anybody, or I hate that they're kinda two that are done by the same person or people, but I just, I'm not for a bunch of road closures, I think we need to have something in place, but, so, I'd be a no, but...
I concur with Vice Mayor Peters. Yeah, as far as a road closure goes, I agree, I think we somewhat need to limit those numbers to specifically, and so, I think we do have some options inside the city that can be looked at for that. I think we've got our city park area, and across the road where the walking track is, I think that's a really, it's a large area, safe area, it's an opportunity, you know, kids can be down there toward the park area, and go down that way, I think that's a good spot.
Be safe without closing the street?
I agree.
It seems like a lot larger area, too.
It is.
I fully support the back-to-school bash, have participated in it, great program.
Yeah, I do, too. I support, I support the back-to-school bash one hundred percent.
Agreed.
But I do...
There's a safer venue, I think.
I agree.
Good point.
Want to roll call vote? Do the roll call vote.
Councilman Aron?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
No.
Councilwoman Knappel?
No.
Councilman Petty?
No.
Councilman Warren?
No.
Vice Mayor Peters?
No.
That was the back-to-school bash, that permit is denied. Okay, the next one's gonna be Walton Days.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next one is Hometown Halloween.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I mean, they're having the event at the courthouse, there's, this is not us denying them the courthouse. This is gonna be at night, twilight, there's a lot of kids, I know there's animosity between both parties, but I'm not gonna have blood on my hands if a kid gets hit, because we're two-stepping a closer up.
So I mean, that's a good point, but the way I have to look at it is, people have been trick-or-treating for years, we need to close every road in Carthage so that they can walk down the road? I'm just asking. I mean, sometimes, as a city, we have to be responsible and find a safe location for things to happen. We've had people run over up on Main Street during those events, because rubber cones aren't gonna stop a car. But cars don't drive in fields, and that's where kids play. I would think that's a safer place, and if we can have a bigger, much bigger event, now, the courthouse, they wanted to haunt a house or something, that's great, but I don't want to be the one that closes a thing down, what happened, what was that, that just happened?
Fire.
The thing, their last parade, they just had, someone ran right through it, because they were bringing, I don't wanna be responsible for that. I wanna put the kids over here where they're safe, and I don't care who does what, as long as they use those, we're good. I'm good with events.
I guess my take on that is, they're already having the event at the courthouse. This is not us telling them they can't have the event, this is, this is the road closure, and there's gonna be a lot of children, concentrated area, it's, we haven't closed a whole lot of streets this year. If you look, if you look back historically, we closed it for the paving, we had to do that, I mean, that's a no-brainer, and we closed it for the maneuvers. I mean, the days of us closing this street every single Saturday is over. So I don't see the big issue in allowing one street closure on Halloween, I don't see it.
Any more discussion?
I'm really torn on it, too.
This, this is, I agree with you, Councilman Knappel, this is one that's in the, because Hometown Halloween has been unsquared, I get that. At the same time, again, I go back to my previous point on the other, that the park area is a really, is a good spot for it, I think there's not even doing more in that area. Again, I'm not...
It doesn't hurt anything to change the safety.
This is not me...
Still have the event.
This is...
Instead of trying to make an unsafe place safe, why can't we move to a safer place?
But that, what I'm telling, that's not the issue, though, but the issue is, they're having the event, and it may, and you're probably right, it's probably safer to have it down there, but they're having the event at the courthouse, they just are.
But they're responsible people, they're not gonna let the kids run out in the streets, I mean, parents have to watch their children, the people putting on the event are responsible too. They're not gonna let kids just run out in the middle of the road. That's, that's, it's their event, that's what I'm saying, I don't think they're gonna turn kids loose.
This is sort of a general thought, not necessarily for this event, but can we not get some of the barriers that they use, like at different events, and...
Did you say bears?
Barriers.
Oh, barriers.
Or barriers would work, too, if we see bears out there, but...
I didn't think we needed barriers.
Maybe we need to invest that so that we can put those barriers at the edge of the sidewalk, and help solidify, so in future, we could...
I agree with that, I've talked to the county mayor about that, put those metal railings that do like that for events, right at the sidewalk, that way the kids can't get through there. It's a perfect idea, but do you want to, I mean, how, how do you wanna do that? Go on your tour across the lawn, side, we have to have a plan. The thing about it is, maybe they don't want that in their event, maybe they don't want games. I mean, I don't know.
Well, they need to decide if they want safety, or they won't, you know?
But that's their decision, I don't decide what they have there.
Yeah.
I mean, my question is, is, I think the word safety is kinda brought up by this, and that's fine, and I understand, this is not, this is not me making a negative comment in any way against the, against the group that wants to put this together. I admire them for doing this, I think this is a great opportunity for kids, and I'll always support it, but if you bring up safety, I think when you look at, I mean, and I see what Councilman Aron's saying, they're gonna, they chose to do this at the courthouse, but I think they still can make, change that decision, if they, and again, I can't tell them what to do, I'm not here to tell them what to do at all, but if you're gonna bring up safety, I mean, this is a safe area to do, I'll say that, it is a safe area.
And I will say this, we are actually working on, me and Daniel talked about today, with people, we're trying to get power down there so people can plug in and get that stuff done, some lights. Any more discussion?
Councilman Aron?
Yes.
Councilman Gray? Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
I suppose yes.
Councilman Warren? Vice Mayor Peters?
No.
Motion carries, forty-two. Next item on the agenda is a PA system, Councilman Petty.
Yeah, it's just an idea that I kicked around, I talked to Sally about a PA system down at the pool to help, now, she made a statement, it is a valid point, that she's loud enough, better bacon, here, but there'll be times occasionally that maybe she's not there to make announcements, you know, for, if there's a storm coming, and they wanna close the pool down, or this, that, and the other.
Why don't we move this and get some ideas of what the price is gonna cost, and what kind of, what they're looking for?
Exactly.
Because they have those portable bullhorns that you give these light horns, that could cover the whole thing.
That's a good point.
As opposed to putting up an electronic PA system if the power goes out and it doesn't work anyway.
Good point.
Maybe just get some prices, and you look at that?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a speed limit on Main Street, Councilman Gray.
I think we need to slow it down, they're gonna be out there running up and down the street, too fast, coming through there, thirty miles is too fast.
What, what do you think it should be, fifteen?
Because they're not gonna enforce it, no way, so it'll be twenty.
Well, if we can, if we hold them down to twenty, if we can hold them down to twenty-five, you know, we're better off than we got now.
So we can discuss it.
Let's make a motion, lower it to fifteen.
Now, where would this be? Where would this be?
I'll second.
Set citizens bank down at the bridge.
Second, so we can have discussion, I apologize.
Second.
Any discussion?
To what, say fifteen?
Fifteen.
I'll second that.
You're gonna second the motion for fifteen?
I'm gonna second it.
Now, discussion? I didn't hear it.
So, again, I didn't hear it, because I was going back and forth, but...
Like, citizens bank this way, because that's where your traffic would be heavy, and you're parking.
Why don't you just do something for the whole city, like, all this, it's not confusing, and it's not, you're going thirty, and then you have to slow down to fifteen, and then you're back up to thirty, and then...
I'm scared we ran the chief in, so he can give us his comments on the speed limits and stuff, that's his expertise.
Oh, yeah.
Can I? I guess it's my expertise. Hold on, I'm worried, I don't have to take a five-minute recess, because I have to be. Motion for recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Stretch your legs, Sains.
TMI. TMI.